It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. Yesterday, the LA City Council debated something that I feel like has been debated at the LA City Council for at least a decade, and that is spending a whole bunch of money that the city doesn't have to redo the Los Angeles Convention Center. Because advocates say our convention center is old, it's outdated, it's dilapidated, and that means we're losing out on a lot of business to Long Beach, to Anaheim, to San Diego, to the convention capital of the world, Vegas. And we need to do something about that. So even though the city of Los Angeles is facing a $1 billion budget shortfall, the city of LA is looking to whip out the old credit card and spend up to $1.7 billion over the next five years to rebuild the convention center and finance it so we're paying for it for the next 30 years. Does this make any fiscal sense? I don't know. Is this going to address some of the underlying issues of why maybe certain conventions don't want to come to downtown LA? Highly doubtful, but let's hear what the advocates have to say. And no one's a bigger champion of this project than the brand new LA City Councilwoman for District 14, Isabel Yorado.
As our city grapples with these difficult projections, it's crucial we invest our limited resources in projects that generate revenue, stimulate-
You imagine this just in your own life, you know, maybe you had a shaky history with money when you were in your twenties, like I did. You're broke, you're in the hole a billion dollars, and the best idea is to somehow you still have a credit card and borrow even more money for a new idea that's totally going to get you out of the hole. Maybe.
Stimulate our local economy and lift our communities. That's why I'm proud to rise today in strong support of the expansion and modernization of the convention center.
Oh, public comment was full of all the people that are going to get giant contracts from this thing, including all of the unions that are going to make a ton of money off of this. And hey, good for them, but does this project totally make sense for us? I don't know.
This isn't just about the convention center itself. It's about showing Angelenos that we are committed into investing in our own residents, our workers and our businesses, and the future of this city. The truth is downtown hasn't fully bounced back from the pandemic. The heart of Los Angeles isn't what it used to be.
Oh, is downtown the heart of Los Angeles? Because if the downtown LA is the heart of Los Angeles, then LA has heart disease.
But it's not for lack of potential. We have an opportunity today to change that.
Is the problem that the convention center building is old? Or is the problem that the convention center is in a very, very, very bad neighborhood? Is the problem that the convention center is a pain in the ass to get to no matter what freeway you're using? And once you get there, it's riddled with homeless encampments and crime? No, 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 no. It's just that the building's really old, and if we build a new building, all that other stuff's not going to matter.
We can deliver on a bold, forward-looking vision to attract new investment and ensure downtown remains a thriving hub for commerce, creativity, and community.
It doesn't have any of those three Cs.
For too long, the city has under-invested in revenue generating infrastructure, and that has left us vulnerable. We're at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to convention centers, and even then, we're still at risk of losing out on major events that have previously committed to LA as well as those that have already expressed a strong interest once the expansion is complete. So let-
So and the promise of a whole bunch of conventions that haven't signed on that say we might come if you build a new building, we're going to spend a whole bunch of money that we don't have. Look, I'm not totally against the idea of rebuilding the convention center, but the city is broke. And part of the reason the city is broke is out of control spending. And the $1.7 billion the city is going to have to borrow to fix this means that there are going to be general fund payments to service that debt for many, many, many years, starting in 2028, 2029, which means there's going to have to be even more budget cuts.
So let's change that today. Moving forward with this project, albeit cautiously and responsibly, will help us regain our competitive edge. It will strengthen our service and hospitality sectors, support local business-
She's a little nervous. She's brand new.
It will strengthen our service and hospitality sectors-
Secrators.
Support local businesses and benefit the many Angelenos who are tied to large-scale event production. And when these events-
All those people who wear those uniforms and say, "Security," those jobs are going to be secured.
And when these events come here, the impact is felt far beyond the convention floor because these events don't exist in the vacuum. They drive hotel bookings, restaurant reservations, retail spending, and foot traffic that makes our public spaces feel welcoming and vibrant.
Well, unless you're in anywhere that's outside of the direct area of LA Live, then you're a little scared. And then you're like, whoops, what's going on here? I mean, is there any other convention center that is in proximity, so close to Skid Row that is maybe something that's unattractive for the business community that wants to have these conventions? Especially when you have other options. You can still go to Southern California, you can go to Anaheim. Anaheim has a beautiful convention center, and you know it's safe because it's right next to Disneyland. Long Beach is having some problems now, but for a while, Long Beach had a very nice convention center. Downtown Long Beach is going to come back, and that's an easier problem to fix than downtown LA. And of course, the convention capital happens to be San Diego. I've done Comic-Con before. That was a wild time. But one of the cool things about Comic-Con is that downtown San Diego and the Gaslamp is so fun, is so cool. I'm born and raised in this town. Even with the Staples Center in LA Live, downtown LA has always felt scary as hell to me.
Visitors don't just stay in downtown. They explore the LA waterfront at the port and-
No, they don't. Do you know how long that takes to sit on the freeway to do that? Oh, we're just going to sit on the 110 for three hours.
They explore the LA waterfront at the port and the Venice Boardwalk in CD11.
You know how hard it is to get to Venice from downtown LA on the 10 freeway? And nobody's using the Expo line because they don't want to get stabbed.
And the Venice Boardwalk in CD11, they take selfies on the Hollywood Boulevard.
The Hollywood Boulevard? She's from here, too. She's a little weirdo.
And all these other places that they see on TikTok and movies.
You can tell she's young because she said TikTok before movies. That's right, they go on the TikTok tour.
All of this economic activity yields general fund revenue that we urgently need to continue to provide vital city services.
And tourism's way down. I understand that. In fact, tourism is taking a huge hit right now because Canadians are boycotting the United States, and a lot of Canadians come to California. But that's another story for another day. Is rebuilding the convention center really the thing that's going to improve tourism in downtown LA? Is it the building for why none of the businesses want to come here?
Let me tell you what I found out. 1% of the city land is in downtown LA, and it generates historically 25% of the city's TOT revenue. That's from downtown LA.
Well, because that's where Staples Center is. What else is there to do here?
So a strong downtown-
Maybe it's just because I'm born and raised, but I am super sour on the idea of all the fun things to do for tourists in the city of Los Angeles. Southern California in general? Yeah, there's a lot of cool stuff. But just the city of LA? Think of how many LA sports teams are even in the city of LA. Think of the fact that the LA Times isn't in the city of LA.
So a strong downtown LA means a strong Los Angeles and a stronger city budget. As we look at reducing spending, we need to think about increasing revenue. And look, my colleagues know I'm a skeptical person.
By the way, one of the things that's in the projected revenue, and it was City Councilman Bob Blumenfeld that pointed this out, is the projected revenue from the rebuilt convention center is all the money that we're going to make from parking. Because you know, in 10 years, people are still going to be driving cars.
I'm a skeptical person. I look at things from all angles. As Council President says, I kick the tires. And so when I did the digging on this and I did the numbers, at the end of the day, for me-
Oh, she's one of those.
At the end of the day, for me, this was a good investment. And the construction will create good-paying union jobs that will support working families.
Okay, obviously, there's a lot of people in the room that are going to directly benefit from that, so good for them. But here's the thing. Just saying it's a job creator doesn't do it for me anymore. Because you know what's been a job creator for the past 20 years? The high-speed rail in the state of California. And all they can say about it is created 10,000 jobs. What exactly have those people done for those 15 years that it's been under construction? Nobody knows. So just saying something's a job creator doesn't matter. If all your guideline for how successful this is is it creates jobs, what you're leading to is a project that's going to be way over budget and take way longer than people think, which there's actual timelines that matter here because they need to do a bunch of this construction before the Olympics and then stop construction because they need to use the convention center, and then after the Olympics, do more construction. And all of this is supposed to happen on time in the city of Los Angeles where they're just barely getting around to issuing the first permits for rebuilding in the Palisades, and that's a freaking emergency?
And the construction will create good-paying union jobs that will support working families. More tourism-
By the way, here's a fun fact that I learned from this meeting. The LA City Council has been planning this rebuild for a decade. There has yet to be a shovel in the ground, and we've already spent $54 million just on consultants and planning and drawing up some maps. $54 million. So I guess we got to spend the $1.7 billion. Again, not totally opposed to the idea, but maybe we should start making these big capital expenditures after we get our own house in order.
More tourism means more jobs, more opportunities for local businesses.
But are you going to get more tourism? The rebuilding of the convention center is not going to suddenly clean up the streets of downtown LA. It's not going to do anything about the crime problem and the MacArthur Park problem or any of the other issues in downtown LA.
No vacant storefronts in downtown LA and a better quality of life for Angelenos across the city.
There's still going to be vacant storefronts in downtown LA.
In a time of fiscal uncertainty, this is exactly what kind of innovative strategic investment we need to move our city forward. And representing the heart of LA is so personal to me. Revitalizing downtown is so important, and I want to thank my constituents-
How about we start cleaning up the streets first, and then people will feel safe, and then they'll come back? That's what's starting to happen in San Francisco. It wasn't just Isabel Yorado that had to speak. It was also John Lee. That's right, this idea to borrow a whole bunch of money the city doesn't have is bipartisan because he's technically the Republican on the city council.
My colleagues, you know, the convention center is a critical part of our economy, and I think we've neglected it for too long. For us to remain our competitive edge and stay relevant in the evolving landscape of this global economy and global events and global conventions, I believe now is the time we have to invest in our convention center.
You know, it's funny, too, is a lot of the people who are voting for this or who approve this, and again, they haven't done the final agreement yet, but they went forward with another study to make sure that we can't afford it, even though we can't, is most of these people will be out of office by the time we have to start paying back the debt on this.
This modernization is not just an upgrade, but an investment in our future. The new convention center will meet the demands of the 21st century with cutting-edge technology, sustainable design, a larger, more versatile space to accommodate a wide range of events. You know, we are the second largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions.
Oh, my.
We want LA to be number one, and we want this to be the number one choice for organizers and attendees from around the globe.
Okay, so here leads to my question before we get to more sound of the members of the city council advocating to spend a whole bunch of money that they don't have. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. You've been to downtown LA. John Lee, give us those statistics again.
You know, we are the second largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions.
Do you think the city of Los Angeles ranks 21st in conventions because the building is old? Or do you think it's a different reason? 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. Why do you think the second largest city in the nation ranks 21st in convention traffic? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Let's go to Mike in Orange County. Mike, hello.
Hey, Randy, how are you?
Doing great.
Yeah, they can say whatever they want about the new building and it's going to, you know, if you build it, they will come type of a situation. The bottom line is, unfortunately, I, you know, I do a lot of business in downtown. Downtown has become a dump. The convention center is directly across Figueroa from those massive empty structures that have become like landmarks of graffiti, and they've been vacant for years. And there's nothing to do there. You go, you talk about San Diego, you've got Gaslamp, you've got Padres games, you've got the waterfront. Long Beach will definitely come back. You have the waterfront, you have the Pike, you have Shoreline, you have a lot of things to do. Easy to navigate Vegas, you have everything under the sun, it's all walkable. Downtown LA, it's just, it would be great to have a new convention center, no doubt, but you can't say that that's going to change fortunes throughout Los Angeles, especially she's, you know, they're naming off things that you can't even get to. Nobody's going to drive an hour and a half to go see the waterfront from downtown LA in peak rush hour. It's, you know, it's unrealistic.
They're totally not. The only advantage that downtown LA has is the fact that the convention center is near Figueroa, so those convention attendees can go find a hooker real easily.
Well, you're Mr. Brightside, I guess. The, yeah, it's unrealistic. I mean, I understand the push for it, but, yeah, I mean, come on, that's, I don't know who they're trying to sell. They're trying to sell people that are not familiar with downtown or don't go to Los Angeles. You see what they're trying to sell.
Well, they want to make a real lucrative deal for the union people that are pushing for this that will keep them in office, whether this makes sense or not. And based on the actions of the city council, there's no commitment to clean up downtown LA, so we're going to spend $2 billion on a pretty building that no one's going to want to go to.
The fact that throughout your talk leading up to this, you keep referring to Crypto Arena as Staples Center, which everybody still does, just shows kind of the lack of identity in that place. Like to everybody, it's still Staples Center, and it's like, yeah, you know, it's kind of an, it's an afterthought. And that's right next to, there's just, there's just nothing to do there. It's, you know, I just don't see it happening.
I think you make some really good points. Thanks so much for the call, Mike. Appreciate it. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. The LA City Council wants to borrow $1.7 billion to rebuild the LA Convention Center because according to the city council, we are not doing very well when it comes to convention traffic.
You know, we are the second largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions.
Do you think conventions don't want to come to downtown LA because the building is old? Or do you think it has to do with something else, like, I don't know, crime homelessness and hookers? 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. What do you think about the LA City Council wanting to borrow money they don't have to rebuild the LA Convention Center? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. We're taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. The LA City Council is considering spending and borrowing $1.7 billion that they don't have to rebuild the convention center because, well, nobody's coming here for conventions anymore.
You know, we are the second largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions.
Do you think the fact that the convention center is old is the reason that people aren't coming here for conventions? Or is there another reason that conventions are avoiding downtown Los Angeles? 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. Let's go to Harry in North Ridge. Harry, hello.
Hello?
Hey.
Hello? Can you hear me?
You're on the air.
Hey. Um, I want to know why, if they're going to take that kind of money, let them build a monorail where we can all benefit from it. They keep digging these stupid holes in the ground to put tunnels in that I would never ride because when we have an earthquake and you're in a tunnel like that, you're going to hit the wall, whereas monorail lives through tunnels. We were offered 60 miles of free monorail by the company that did Disneyland, and we got, the city council got paid off by Chevron, by Firestone, and by Standard Oil. It's ridiculous. We need to have transportation for everybody, not just downtown.
Think you make a good point, although I don't think we're ever seeing a monorail in our lifetimes. Thanks so much for the call, Harry. Appreciate it. They have been talking about a monorail down the 405 since I was born, and I think I'll be dead before they put the shovel in the ground. And I'm young. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. The LA City Council is considering borrowing $1.7 billion they don't have to rebuild the LA Convention Center. Do you think people are avoiding the LA Convention Center because it's old or because of something else in downtown LA? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. Your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. We're taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. The LA City Council is considering borrowing $1.7 billion they don't have because they're actually in the hole a billion dollars right now to rebuild the LA Convention Center over the next five years. John Lee says we got to do this because we're getting killed in the convention market.
You know, we are the second largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions.
Do you think LA ranks so low in convention traffic because the building is old? Or do you think it has something else to do with downtown Los Angeles? 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. Let's go to Alan in Canoga Park. Alan, hello.
Hi, Randy. Has any of those false legislative been downtown? Everything is tagged, it's dangerous downtown, the hotels are expensive, and the hotels, even if you stay at a hotel, you may be standing next to a homeless person who's going to set the hotels on fire. But the issue is that they've, they're still building LAX. They still have a train to nowhere, and this boondoggle with the convention center will be a convention center to nowhere. It'll be, they'll keep borrowing money, money that nobody has. So I say no to the convention center. Clean the city up.
You would think that would be the simpler thing, and then we'd have tourism dollars, and then we could have a balanced budget and then start investing some of the money that we make in this city, but we're not doing that.
I know, they always think, they always think backwards downtown.
Of course they do. Thanks so much for the call, buddy. Appreciate it. We just don't do that. We're just going to invest in something without cleaning up the surrounding area. And downtown LA is very different from downtown San Diego, Anaheim, Vegas, even Long Beach. Downtown LA doesn't have any of those natural amenities, and downtown LA is super unsafe. Gee, I wonder why conventions don't want to come here. 800-222-KABC is the phone number. Let's go to Dale in Long Beach. Dale, hello.
Hey, Randy, I've been doing some research. You know, San Diego has a great convention center. They only made $54.1 million projected revenue for 2005. That wouldn't even be enough money to cover their bond. $1.7 billion. I'm sure their bond is like $100 million a year. Then one of the number one convention centers doesn't even generate enough money to cover that bond.
That's the thing. The expectations of revenue that are going to make this, as they call in the budget process, a net zero thing? No, the city's going to lose money on this, and the city's already in a operating budget deficit of $1 billion a year.
There's no way the convention center can cover that debt.
No, not when-
It's not even possible for the number one convention center to cover that debt.
If they can't make a profit in America's finest city, good luck on making it happen in downtown LA. Thanks so much for the call, Dale. Appreciate it. Think about this. This is another thing I learned from the city council meeting. We've already borrowed $57 billion, excuse me, $57 million just on consulting and planning for a project that does not have a shovel in the ground. And just on the servicing of that debt, the total that we're going to have to pay is $90 million. We don't even have a deal yet to build this thing, and we've already spent almost $60 million. And by the time we finish spending all that debt payments, we're spending $90 million. So expect a lot more budget cuts coming soon because the city is broke and we're actively making it broker. Let's go to Mike in Los Angeles. Mike, hello.
Hi, I just came, my wife and I just came back from vacation in South Carolina, Mississippi, and Georgia, and it was, I could count all the homeless on like two hands. It was, it was just heartbreaking when I thought where I grew up in Los Angeles, in the San Fernando Valley, that the homeless are just such a problem. But why they're a problem, I think, is because the city council and, you know, the people in charge of Los Angeles overall, they just don't feel the pain. They get paid just the same no matter what decision they make. And they all, if somebody ever gets fired, they move up to a higher position. It's just the most ridiculous political situation I've ever heard about in my lifetime so far.
You're totally right, buddy, and these people fail upward, and there's no oversight, and they all think they're brilliant when really they're failing us. Thanks so much for the call, Mike. Appreciate it. 800-222-KABC is the phone number. Let's go to Tom in Long Beach. Tom, hello.
Hello, Randy, thanks for taking my call. You know, I went, I remember when I was a kid, and I live in Long Beach, and I used to play in downtown, ride my bike down there and everything. And they, I remember the issue, my mom and dad were talking about it, one of those kitchen table issues, and they said, they were laughing because the city of, the city of Long Beach wanted to redo the convention center down there, and no matter what people said, they were bound and determined to do it. They, they, they got to the point where they said it was dangerous and it was going to fall down. And I remember going down as a little kid, watching the ball hit the building and bouncing off, and nothing happened. They eventually had to take dynamite to it, and they had to take it, do that about three times before they could get the thing down. It wasn't very dangerous at all. And I tend to think that they're going to do it whether they want, whether we want them to do it or not. They want to do it, and they need to get their priorities in line. If they don't clean up LA, they're not going to go ahead and change any of the, any of the attendance issues that they think they're having. They need to clean that, clean that place up first, make it an attractive city despite the convention center, and then think about fixing the, redoing the convention center if they want to.
I think that's exactly what they need to do. We're doing it backwards. Thanks so much for the call, Tom. Appreciate it. Think about it. We're going to rebuild the convention center. Some theoretical conference is going to come to downtown LA, and they're going to walk outside of the convention center and look up and see Taggart Tower that's still going to be there in five years. 800-222-KABC is the phone number, 1-800-222-5222. The LA City Council is considering borrowing $1.7 billion to rebuild the convention center because we're losing out on a lot of business.
You know, we are the second largest city in this country, yet we rank 21st in conventions.
Why do you think the city of LA ranks so low in convention traffic? 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222. If you're on hold, stay on hold. We'll get to you next. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. Let's get back to the phones on the LA City Council wanting to rebuild the convention center by putting it on the old credit card. Let's go to Stuart in Seal Beach. Stuart, hello.
Hey, Randy. First question is, where is the study showing that a new building would create lots of interest in coming to LA? You would think you'd have an independent study asking all the people who book conventions, are they likely to come to LA? What are the problems with LA? None of that- problems with LA? None of that was discussed. Instead, what I heard is someone, a new councilman trying to kowtow to the unions and trying to get reelected, literally just waving liver in front of a dog with the union members not working very much because building is hitting a downturn in Los Angeles.
It's pretty much what happened at that meeting. There was no independent study. They had their own study, which was very rosy on the effects of this construction. Thanks so much for the call, Stuart. Appreciate it. If you're on hold, stay on hold. We'll go to a lightning round of calls next. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. Let's get back to the phones on the LA City Council wanting to borrow $1.7 billion to redo the convention center. Let's go to Danny in Brea. Danny, hello.
Hey, Randy, how are you? Listen, it's so typical, it's so typical with these Democrats to, like the last caller said, have no idea what actually draws people. We do a lot of trade shows, and no one wants to come to LA. There's no draw to LA. It's five and a half hours from the East Coast. A new building's not going to do anything. And again, they just don't think about this stuff. It never even crosses their mind. And even if they built a brand new building, no one's going to come. Really quick, Randy, my nine-year-old daughter wants to just say hi on the radio so she could hear her voice.
Hi.
Of course, hi. What's going on?
Thank you so much.
Can I say hi?
She's talking. You say hi.
Hi.
Hi, you're on the radio.
Well, now you know. You got a, you got a four-year-old, a six-year-old, and a nine-year-old listening to your amazing program. We appreciate what you do every day.
Thanks so much for the call. You're going to hear that on the radio in 30 seconds. Thanks so much for the call. Let's go to Greg in Sherman Oaks. Greg, hello.
Good evening. I'm-
Hey.
Program is excellent, valid, and reliable. Three, couple comments. You cannot give large bureaucracies money. A lot of it is absorbed by administrative costs. As you've said, poor planning and no accountability. It just goes out the window. And all the other factors discussed certainly support all of that. So it's, it's a problem. It's a problem.
The fact that we've already spent $57 billion, $1 million on just consultants shows you what a boondoggle this project would be if it goes forward. Thanks so much for the call, Greg. Appreciate it. Let's go to Mike in Costa Mesa. Mike, hello.
Hey, Randy, how's it going? Nice to talk to you.
Doing great.
I'd like to just say that I think that it's a, it's a money laundering scheme. I think now that they, especially they've lost their funding from the feds, like, they're just looking for any other way to, to get their money back. I wonder, when was the last time a project cost less than a billion dollars? It seems like every project is a billion or more. So, you know, we should be getting itemized receipts, you know, outlining every hour, every minute spent on any of, whether it be consulting or planning or whatever. It just seems like we're getting hosed here, and everybody's looking the other way.
Well, and this is what the estimated cost is now. You know, when this project is complete, it's going to be twice that minimum.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, it's never, never on time, on schedule, or on budget. So, you know, they're just lying in their pockets. I think, I think somebody needs to follow the money, you know, on every one of these items and see where it really goes.
I think that's a really important thing because we've seen members of the city council go to prison for that exact same thing. Thanks so much for the call. Appreciate it. Jose Wezar used to be in charge of downtown LA, and pretty much every project that he signed off on, he got bribed on. Not everyone, but most of them. Let's go to Bill in La Canyata. Bill, hello.
Randy, Isabel Yorato sounds like a 12-year-old version of Janice Hahn, so much that I don't think you can tell the difference with three quotes. Say Isabel or Janice. It's like TikTok in the movies.
I'm going to guess that's Janice?
Close. I'd like the bus driver.
I'm going to guess that's Isabel?
Uh, almost. Is it 20 million or 20 billion?
Okay, that one I know is Janice. You're right. They do sound very similar, my friend.
They're both public sector idiots who have never done anything for their, with their own money. That's why they say this crap.
And we keep electing them over and over and over again. Thanks so much for the call, Bill. Appreciate it. Although, in Council District 14, it was pretty much Isabel or Kevin DeLeone. Sometimes you're faced with a bad decision or a worse decision. Well, we'll be following this because this is a lot of money that the city does not have. And I didn't get time to play the sound, but Monica Rodriguez made a great point. Everyone kept calling this a job creator as they're about to have massive layoffs in the city because the budget's a billion dollars in the hole. Thanks so much for listening to the show, everyone. We always appreciate you dialing in and emailing us. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC.